The Schenectady City Council Committee meeting for Monday, October 6, 2025. In the absence of Mr. Minbaran, Mr. Wade will be called to support of Finance.
So I'd like to call the order of Finance Committee. We have two items on the agenda tonight, first of which is the grant toward the GTSC, New York State PTS Police Traffic Services Program in 2026. It's going to be City PD 00125-047.
Good evening. So tonight, I'm going to present the grant we've been awarded from the Governor of Traffic Safety Committee in conjunction with DMV Department of Law and Vehicles. This grant is our, it's the PTS grant, Police Traffic Safety, Traffic Services, excuse me, and it's for $45,920, $35,000 of which would be going for general patrol services and $10,920 would be, $10,920, excuse me, would be towards the seatbelt mobilization enforcement initiative. This does not require any matching funding from the city and it's just a supplement to the other GTSC grant that we presented last time.
Thank you, T. Any questions or comments? Hearing only a motion.
I'll move it.
I was second, all in favor.
Aye.
And the second agenda item is National Grid and OUB Make Ready Program, I.A. 1744, 1731 Foster Ave., question?
All right. This is another grant that we have received from National Grid for all the electric vehicle charging stations that we're working on placing around the city. So this one is in the amount of $341,142. It would be to install four DCFC charging station plugs in front of 1741 Foster Ave. Very in the area. It's the Bureau Building over on Foster. Currently, we are, also no matching funds for this. We're currently looking for more funding, grant funding, to cover the rest of the project. This isn't going to cover all of it. So the intention is that we're just looking to accept this, to secure it, while we find more grant funding to cover the rest of this, so it's a zero dollar cost to the city.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just want to clarify that there's no time limit, so we won't lose the other grants while we're waiting for this, for the other funding.
We have a good relationship with all the, all the companies or organizations that offer grants. There's extensions, everything like that, so if need be, we can apply for an extension, you know, as long as the service is, we've never been denied one, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing only a motion.
So moved.
I was second, all in favor.
Aye.
I, are there any other items to the call of Finance Committee? Hearing only a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I was second, all in favor.
Aye. Thank you. So, Mr. Farley is not here yet. I thought he was in the building with, he was?
He was in the building.
Okay, he was in the building. Well, at the table to smoke. So I'm going to convene City Development and Planning, and we have 17 items on the agenda, and item number one, which calls for Chris Walling, but I'm not sure if he's here or in the building, or someone going to speak to item number one, which is the City Council to assume role as seeker lead agency.
I'll speak briefly to it and all of the mayor and then anybody else to fill in.
Okay.
In light of this, it's, this is a seeker resolution in designating the City of Schenectady, the City Council is the lead agency for this particular project, J Street Connector Project, which is dealing, dealing with the, those parcels and connection with the abandonment with Roger Hall Place, as well as access along or the, the Union College properties and behind where the car wash is as you head down J Street towards not that area. This is in, attached to your materials is a short form, excuse me, an environmental assessment form which you are taking. This is the first step in the process. You're, you're going to be taking, getting comments from the public regarding this particular project as it goes through. And regarding the abandonment, that was the public hearing that you had earlier this year, that is still in progress. We're in, you know, contact with the attorneys for Union College, so we have to work out the agreement with Union College regarding the agreement that you have to, you, the council have to approve pursuant to the second class cities law regarding the abandonment of these streets. So this is just part of that overall project, and so this is just designating the City Council's lead agency as you go for the environmental process.
So is there any timeframe in terms of working out what things are with Union College?
We are hoping for the next committee cycle. We're hoping, that's, that's a goal, so don't, it's an ambitious goal, but, you know, we'll see how it goes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Chair. There was some email that went around today, I think it went about the council, talked about some of the right of way and bike lane on this. The actual design has that 10 feet wide, which I presented, but it's only eight feet. I'm not quite sure where that came from, but as you, it's not specific to lead agency designation, but again, it seemed to be some disinformation that was out there as opposed to what is actually going to happen.
Is it, will it be eight or 10?
10, I'm swaying.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that's assuming the survey all comes in, the City Council approves it.
We might go for nine and a half, but okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. I'd just like to say that I was down there the other day, I was on the outside of the tunnel is all painted, and we had the lights on inside the tunnel, so you could kind of just like look through. I was just in the neighborhood and they stopped by, so, per garrison, kind of nicely, yep.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll take a motion. I'll move it. I'll second, all in favor. Aye. Item number two is to authorize the mayor or his designate to enter to supplemental agreement number one with New York State Department of Transportation. For the, for the, let me do this. This is, this is about my client, I'm in right now.
We have energy in our office.
I skipped a line because he wasn't here. No. Item number two is to authorize the mayor or his designate to enter to supplemental agreement number one with New York State Department of Transportation for the Franklin Street cycle path in 1761 dot six zero. Ms. Green.
Hello, good evening, council. I'm just filling in for Mr. Walling today, he was at a conference. Spoke with him briefly, he said the major construction estimated completed by 11:15 of '25. As you see in Schedule A, federal funds of 1.9 million, state funds of 365 million. So the recommendation is enter into supplemental agreement number one with New York State Transportation, New York S.D.O.
Are there any questions or concerns? I'll move it. I'll second, all in favor. Aye. Thank you very much. Item number three is updating ARPA resolution for BCNI Hamilton Hill infill. Ms. Carver.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council members. I come before you this evening asking for an updated resolution in support of BCNI. They came in 2022 and provided some updates to the council, asking, and since then their scope of work has changed. They did update us with their funding and spending plan, but at that time it was not a formal ask, and because they, they need the resolution to be updated to support the leverage funds that they indicated they would use for New York State. I also have invited BCNI here tonight to answer any questions that you may have about the requested update.
Right. So I would like BCNI to come, you come and explain the change, what was asked, but you're now asking, and the reasons why.
Sure. So the original proposal from 2022 was a project that was designed intending to use a different source of funding from the state, the participation loan program, for various reasons that didn't work. And so in early 2024, the resolution was changed and the project was changed for a new source of funding from HCR called Home ARP, which is a different kind of ARPA funding, passed through New York State Homes and Community Renewals Home Program, which you're familiar with. And the scope changed in large part because the funding has a quirky federal limit that if you go over 11 residential units, you have to pay prevailing wage rates, which would have sizably increased an already very expensive renovation project. So our proposal changed to two phases of the project, the first one being this project using the lots on Germania Avenue for redevelopment together with some lots on Schenectady Street, and then the subsequent lots on Page Street and Westover are still to be acquired from the city. We've already acquired the Germania lots, paid for those at the end of August, and now we'll have title to those lots. The other lots will be part of a home ownership development instead of a rental project to do completion of work on Page Street and in the adjoining neighborhood.
So you're saying that you lowered it to 11, 11 or 11? So you lowered it because you didn't, it would affect the prevailing wage that you would have to pay, have paid prevailing wage?
Yeah, there was a restriction with the federal funding that capped the number of units for the project, that's correct, for that leverage funding of $4.4 million from HCR.
Okay, so you're doing only 11, and what's going to happen with the other 15 that are left, the other?
Yeah, so those ones will be the second phase, and like I mentioned, we'll do a home ownership development project there, using a different subsidy source from the state, together with the land bank, to do new modular infill on those lots with homes that would be sold to first time home buyers and low income residents of the community.
And so all the funding that you're, the ARPA funding will just be used for the 11?
That's correct.
And you have a different funding source for the rest?
That's correct.
Already in place?
It's being worked on as we speak. It's not confirmed, but it's in process.
Okay. Any other questions, sitting? Yes, Mr. Ryan, please.
Madam President, for the council members, ARPA funding, as you know, has a short suspense, even shorter now, and as the recipient, the City of Schenectady, we are the contact person for the contact agency for the Department of Treasury for any sort of recruitment. So I say this to the, you know, the sub recipients, as you're well aware, there has been some recruitment and cancellations at the federal level regarding funding for various programs. What sort of guarantee can you give to the council and to the city that when Treasury, Treasury is not going to be coming to us for any sort of recruitment?
Sure. Good question. The project is far enough along that we've already bid and awarded the contract to a general contractor, who's actually started work as of Friday, doing security perimeter fencing around the first sites, and will be mobilizing work this week. And it's a 12 month project at best, but with this particular allocation of funding into the project, it'll be some of the first money spent over the next two to three months. So we anticipate that this money will be spent well before the end of this calendar year, which I know June of next year is the intended deadline for full expenditure. We anticipate being well, well in advance of that.
So you anticipate using the ARPA funding by the end of this calendar year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. So I would ask that, if we could get an update on where you are with the spending, I know that will come through Ms. Carver's office, but as Mr. Ryan has said, we are on a very, very strict and shorter than the last time we met timeline, so we really have to make sure that, you know, we don't, none of us want to make, have any of this money, we couldn't, I'm sure you don't either.
No.
But, you know, we, we have to work in partnership to make sure, because I know that there's already been some movement, let me just say it like that, on this project. So we really have to make sure that we're moving forward and hopefully there will not be any other adjustments.
There will not be any other adjustments. We are moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Okay. Thank you. I'll take a motion. I'll move it. I'll second, all in favor. Aye. Thank you. Item number four is rezoning parcels on Maxim Road Extension. Ms. Carver.
In 2017, we had four parcels that were rezoned from M1 to C3. Currently, there's a 30 foot city store easement there, and now the properties are not well suited for the uses under six, under C3. So the department, our department zoning engineer, General Services met with the property owner and the engineer to evaluate what options would be best, and we would like to move it back to M1, like industrial. The zoning designation provides more flexibility given the physical constraints. Today, I've invited my zoning officer here to answer any questions on what happened and why this request is needed to be granted.
If you could just go through the, if you just want to just kind of go through that?
Okay. And the ask today is that we adopt a resolution for the proposed zoning amendment to City Plan.
Laura. So, so the court now, as well, is going to just explain why this change fit this, right?
Yep, sure.
That's a real lot side.
So in 2017, there were areas that were given an option to change their zoning to the C3. That was done to these parcels in question, but since the zoning change in 2017, the permitted uses and uses that are not permitted for the zoning district have prevented development from happening. The present owners have, for the past 10, little less than 10 years, have tried to sell the parcels under the C3 zoning, but unfortunately, they had had no success with that, so they've had to actually drop the price. The new interested buyers have a plan for professional offices and then also for kind of like a maker space, outdoor storage, but specifically for professionals that are in contracted fields. And the difference between normal storage is the fact that they will have an office building for the people that choose to rent specifically for their businesses to go to. But with the current zoning district as a C3, they can't do the uses that they're proposing. On top of that, this parcel is abutted with an M1 zoning district, so it wouldn't be spot zoning, it would actually be a smooth transition to the same district.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yes, Mr. Ryan?
Madam President, the resolution will be a referral from the, the committee, from the council, to the planning commission, so they can, you know, fully develop and have their input on the zoning of these parcels.
All right. So we'll refer into the planning commission. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Just quick question. So why are we zoning the M1s?
You can answer that, you can answer that.
So the, if it wasn't touching the M1, if it was isolated in the C3, then it would have to be used variance, but because it is abutted to, and it used to be the M1, so it would just be going back to what it originally was.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll, I'll take a motion. So moved. I'll second, all in favor. Thank you. Thank you very much. Item number five is a resolution in support of the Hamilton Hill Harbor Center from the governor. Mr. Minbaran's absent, but we all received a letter just, she, we should have it as a separate document, can we, a paper? Yes? All right, so the Hamilton Hill Art Center is asking for this, going to the governor, asking for funding, and has asked that the council just provide a letter of support, just stating what they've done in the community, and, you know, how long they've been here, and just asking that, you know, a favorable outcome for their funding ask. Are there any questions regarding that? If not, I'll take a motion. I'll move it. I'll second, all in favor. Aye. Thank you. Item number six is a reminder that a proposed amendment to section 283-4 and 264-2 of the Schenectady City Code, requiring a massage pile to have a certificate of use, and adding massage pile to the zoning definition. Public hearing will be held on the 27th of October. Ms. Barash, did you want to add anything to that at all?
No.
Okay. All right, this is just a reminder. Item number seven is declaring that the renovation of the Central Park Casino into the Schenectady Environmental Education Center, it's not subject to state environmental policy review of seeker. Ms. Barash.
I'll, I'll take that.
Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. This is dealing with the, the environmental project, the, up, the classroom up there at the casino. In reviewing what's proposed for the work there and looking at environmental implications and, and, and planning staff, this does not require an environmental review, but we need to do, we, the city has to do this resolution declaring that it doesn't need environmental review in order to process the grant money and the lease, so this is part of the overall process.
Any questions? All right. I'll second, all in favor. Aye. Item number eight is adding definition of battery energy storage facility to Section 264-2 of the Schenectady zoning code and amending Schedule B of Chapter 264 of the zoning code to battery energy storage facilities in the C5, M1, and M2 zoning districts by special use permit. Ms. Barash?
I'll.
Mr. O'Brien?
Okay, I'll take that one. This is a kind of follow on on the first item on the new leaf agenda, that you see on the government ops agenda, and also a follow on to the referral to the planning commission regarding zone change. What this is going to do is add the definition of battery storage facility to our zoning law, because it doesn't currently exist, and that, we'll be adding that definition and then putting those, the proposals, putting those in certain areas, the M1, M2 industrial districts, and the C5 industrial districts, and each, whether you're in either of those three, they're all going to use a special, you need a special use permit. So that's the referral that's going to go for the, to the planning commission for their input and recommendations, and then we'll come back here for your review for, as it goes forward.
All right, so this was, I know this started because of the, the battery storage that we're, we're talking about on Anthony Street?
Correct.
And that zone is what right now?
That zone, I believe, M1 or M2.
So is it that we're going to be looking at doing more of that throughout the city? So that's why we're also including C5 and C1?
Yeah, C5. Based on what, you know, as the, the comment, the presentation that was made last week, it's my understanding that there have been other companies reaching out to development regarding these types of facilities, so the idea is to put it in the zoning code and then start dealing with it regarding where these types of facilities are going to be placed in the city, in order to look into.
In terms of this, are you aware of any environmental impacts?
Well, I mean, there's environmental impacts regarding that, and that's why we're, that's what the suggestion is, using, having special use permits, so neighboring properties, the impact on neighboring properties is addressed. So even though it may be zoned correctly in an area, it's the, the next task is also requiring special use permits because of the unique nature of these types of facilities.
Absolutely.
And the developing nature of the technology behind them. So there requires a degree of flexibility in the code. As the technology changes, the special use permit is still there, can address those changes.
So I, I know they're called battery, is it a specific type of battery that's?
It's, I'm not, I'm, I'm.
You have the guy to answer that, gotcha.
And that's where the, it's, it's a general definition we're, we're providing. There's a type one, there's a type two. There's a type one, there's a type two. That's in the, my sort of definitions of these types of battery storage facilities, but once again, you're dealing with a developing technology. Do we want, you know, keep it broad rather than saying, okay, type one's facilities, type two? Just put a broad encompassed name to these types of facilities and then the planning commission flush that out or the zoning board flush it out as to if they need any variance.
And right now, we're referring you to the planning commission?
Yes.
With this ask?
This would be referred to the planning commission for their input and recommendations, and then refer back to you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine was a discussion called closing call that was brought forth by Mr. Minbarren. He's informed us he will not be able to be present tonight, so that was moved, asked that to be moved out for two weeks. The final items on the agenda are all for property sales, which would have to be discussed in executive session, so at this time, I ask for a motion to recess.
Oh, motion to recess?
I'm sorry?
Motion to recess, city development planning.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This time, we'll move back to government operations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call government operations to order. We have four items, four items on the agenda. The first one, I believe this is a letter of intent and association, is that something that has to be filed as well?
You can just give that to me.
Mr. Mayor?
This, at this point, doesn't have to go into executive session. This would allow me to enter into, have them send a letter of intent to go on the site at Anthony Street to evaluate in terms of its suitability and engineering features to cite one of these battery storage facilities. If everything checked out and gets approved by the utility, before I could sign a contract or any deal, I have to come back to the city council for final approval. So this just allows them to look at the site and see if, in fact, it would work from their perspective.
Any other questions, Thomas, on that? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
All those in favor?
I'm going to second.
I'll second that. One down. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to our second agenda item is filling the city council vacancy. Madam President?
Thank you. So as we're all aware, we currently have a vacancy on the city councils. We're number six, but it should be a body of seven, so it is up to the city council to fill that vacancy. And so we, this probably, this hasn't happened since 2011, absolutely, where we wanted to, well, not that it happened after that, but anyway, we had a similar situation in 2011. So the council has to discuss what process we want to use. There is no formal process right now that is used to fill a council vacancy. It only says that the council has to fill the vacancy. I can tell you that in 2011, and I wasn't on the council at the time, I was actually one of the people who was vying to get on the council, 2011, Mr. Ricky, who was then a council member, suggested that we use an interview process, which is what we did, similar to probably what all of us have done in terms of coming before the Democratic Committee to, to run for office. So I'm suggesting that we do something very similar where there's an interview process, and then we, as a body, discuss the folks who come before us and who we show an interest, as opposed to us, you know, just deciding that, you know, I think that's, that person is a good person, just, you know, just based on our personal knowledge. I think that everyone who has an interest should have an opportunity to be able to bring them forward, why they feel that they would be a good addition to the city council. So yeah, is how I propose that we would move forward, and certainly I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, their thoughts.
Yes, Madam President, I agree with the interview process. I think oftentimes, people are discouraged just due to not being well-versed in the art of campaigning or how to represent their interests, so I think this is a, the how you presented it would be a nice opportunity to hear from prospective candidates throughout the city. I think the only caution, and I just want to see clarification, you mentioned going through the Democrat Party, wanting to ensure that there be all aspects open regardless of party affiliation.
Absolutely. I was just, I was referring to that's the process that we use, I don't know what other parties use. So, okay, no, every, just to be clear, that it doesn't, party affiliation has nothing to do with an opportunity to run for city council or to even to be appointed at this point. Anyone can apply. Yes?
And there's no rush, right? I mean, we don't have to do this right away, we can wait as long as we want to. I think in the past, there was a situation where the council actually waited even until the next election cycle, which would be in 2026, to, they didn't appoint anybody, they waited until there was an election so that we could get, you know, the citizens the opportunity to vote on who was going to be that, I think it was the seventh, I'm looking at the empty chair here, the seventh, the seventh council member to join us. So I do, you know, if we were going to move forward, I don't think we have to do it right away. I definitely would agree that we should be doing applications and an interview process if we decide to take it on ourselves, but I also suggest as an alternative, which I think, I guess I look to legal counsel to see, I just know that it was done in the past, but I think we could wait until the 2026 election cycle as well, if we wish to.
I mean, it's up to the council, but I think sometimes it's whether or not you, there was an issue of whether somebody was, you know, had the support to go forward, so that by reality, they may have created the vacancy to go longer if there was no number. So I mean, if you want to do it sooner, you can, or if you can't come to an agreement, then we're going to make it until the next election. But I think the goal is to have it filled before then. So if I'm just thinking back on other times, I mean, if it stayed open longer.
Right. And were there issues?
There was issues, in the sense that there was a rule, you know, there's six people, you're going to need four votes.
So to Ms., to Ms. Patrick's point, no, there is no time, and I don't believe we wait the entire election cycle from one year to the next. I, I know that in 2011, it took four months. I know that for a fact, and then the next time, I don't, I don't believe it was quite that long on the timeframe when we had vacancies, when we actually had two. So, and it's very clear, I put it here, that it's that what the city charter reads, and it specifically says that the council appoints to the vacancy, so.
I thought that, oh, I'm sorry.
So that's, that's in our charter, that's not something that, that was decided here, or something that we do differently based on council, Corporation Council advice, the charter speaks to it.
And other questions, comments around that issue? Mr. Ture?
Yes, thank you. So I again would agree that we would take applications, interviews, no matter what their party affiliation, but again, I'm in no hurry to, to rush this. We have a pretty stringent budget coming up that we're going to need to be involved with, so I can say after we do whatever we need with the budget, then we can really start thinking about accepting or putting out some type of application for individuals to, to apply.
So I heard the term "application" twice, and I just don't, we, there is no such document, and I'm not even, I don't even believe that we need to create one, that we're, we're creating something from, for others that we did not have to do. So I'm suggesting we put out resumes, and we give resumes, it's what we all did. We asked, we submitted our resume, and then we were interviewed, so I'm not sure the thought process of now creating an application and, and how do we determine what that application should be? I, I don't see us adding that as something to do. I mean, I'm not even sure of the basis of creating an application for that. So I say the process is the same process that we use as, whenever, whatever party it is, they submit their resumes, and then they, they get an interview. So I'm not sure where the word "application" comes in or how we even do that, and quite frankly, I'm not in favor of that.
Just quickly, I don't think that, I was hoping that that was more just semantics around like, somebody's putting their resume, and their resume should suffice for giving all the information that we probably would ask for on our application, right? Is that, Ms. Patrick?
I, I know, at least for myself, the last couple of times that I ran, I did a letter that outlined my intentions and, you know, kind of spoke to my, my qualifications, my interests, and attached my resume, and I would be okay with a letter of intent and resume to suffice as an application, as you're suggesting, it is sort of semantical.
And let's not use, let's not use the word "application."
As if you were applying for a job, you know?
But yes.
If we're going to do, if we're going to do that process instead of waiting for an election.
I'm just saying, let's not use the word "application."
Yeah, yeah, we, yes, I, I agree. So my thoughts on this are people submit their resume, we, although we don't have, although we're not under a deadline ourselves, we'd want to, just like any other position, we want to give some parameters to motivate people to submit their resumes or their letter of interest within a period of time, so we're not collecting, you know, so many that, you know, you know, the process becomes, I'm too crazy. I feel like if we do that within a reasonable time, have people submit their resumes to the clerk office and therefore we can look at, almost similar, even though there was an application for the housing task force type of thing, I appreciate that distinction, I'm thinking more about it. We don't have that application, people submit their resume, but then we decide on a date, review the resumes, and, and then have a discussion around making an appointment. Mrs. Ture?
I would disagree on the, even on the fact that I hope there are some.
No, what I was saying is that if we, if we don't have a certain amount of parameters on it, yeah, that would be a good problem to have. It's actually a problem that we have in terms of our housing task force, which I think was, again, a good problem to have. Okay, so are you, are there further discussion on that?
So I, I would have to agree that we, it's because we have so many meetings coming up, it's not something that we, I don't see us trying to fit that in right now, while we're going through the budget process as well, so I'm not saying we should certainly extend it indefinitely, but I don't see that way, how we could have, you know, do that process and do all the budget stuff that we have to do, because all of that work includes us as well as the city clerk's office.
Okay. Any other further discussion around that? All right, no need for taking action right now on that, so we'll move on to our next item, and that is to amend the city code to citizenship or immigration status documentation requirements for all city, all certificates, permits, and licenses. So, I'm sorry, just, there's skipping one? Oh, all right, all right, okay, well, I did, I jumped right over that. So this is one that I'm really kind of excited about. So we'll go to item number three, which is a residency requirement slash incentives for first responders and teachers. So the reason why I brought this forward, and definitely in respects to our very, very lengthy agenda today, I think the value in this is kind of just presenting this as overarching idea that I have brought up before, but I think that if we kind of talk about it a little bit and then give all of my colleagues the opportunity to look, do some research around what's out there, like I've done, and then maybe come up with some possible incentives. And I'm leaning more towards the incentives because I understand that the requirements, to order to change requirements, a lot more action has to be taken, but the idea is here that we're looking at going into our budget conversation, things, you know, we really, I hope that this is contributing to the urgency of this idea to try to make sure that we're planning, looking towards the future for this, for our city. And right now, our school district is one of the largest employers in this, in the city, though that, though they're not within our purview, these are really good-paying jobs, these people are gainfully employed, as well as our first responders, and I, you know, I think we just took in something like 40 properties to start the foreclosure process. And I'm thinking of how can we incentivize it to where maybe working with our, our local credit unions to help us share and make, take on some of the risk of this, and really think about ways to incentivize it and make it attractive so people, we don't have to necessarily depend on the requirements, but the incentive is great enough to get people to take roots in, in the city of Schenectady, and because we're paying out a lot of money, and those people are taking the money, and then they're going in, they're supporting other tax bases. So not only do we get the benefit from, for our tax base, but also fueling and benefiting our local economy, if those monies, those dollars get to stay within our local economy here. So that's kind of the idea, and I know that, I'm sure there's a lot of moving pieces there, but I think if we start, start talking about the incentives, I think the requirements is where things get a little more tricky, but I'd like to just hear people's thoughts on, you know, what do you think about, you know, working together to come up with some incentives to make sure that we have some, to support our kind of our middle-class strength, strengthen our tax base? Any questions, thoughts, or concerns around that? Mr. Williams?
I'm always excited to hear these alternative approaches. I think as our workforce continues to evolve, so must our hiring practices, or we will continue to be lagging in not getting that first rung at the talented individuals. I think this is a very insightful way to ensure that we are keeping those dollars within the city, so I appreciate the manner which is supposed presented, and I would say in my brief search, and these are all methods that are currently established in other municipalities, you hear flexible work options, tailoring EAP options, even partnering with developers to see if they can intentionally offer just low-income rents to city employees. I think truly, this has endless capabilities that only empowers Schenectady. So although I disagree with trying to strong someone to live within the city, I think your point of incentivizing it, I think is a way to kind of leave the middle. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Williams. There's even programs and HUD that have done this, like the Good Neighbor Program, and I think this is something that I would really be looking forward to work with our development department on, and we have a strong here expertise around these things, but I think if we can find a way to bring people into the city that are working in the city, obviously, not only is there the financial, the economic leverage we get there, but there's also neighborhood stability as well. So I'm, I'm thinking about those properties that we're taking in on for foreclosure right now, and just thinking about like, what would it be like if we were able to look at a certain percentage of those properties that maybe needed the, maybe not the most work, maybe the least amount of work, and if we were to almost earmark those properties for this kind of a pilot program, if you will, to, and then offer that up to our first responders and our schoolteachers that are in the city of Schenectady. So again, I will.
So in terms of this, I believe that the code does speak to where people, our first responders, I think, are police and firemen with. I think that we would have to definitely have that discussion around the code and, and if that needs to be changed. If you're, so are you saying that we would change the code, or would we just incentivize them to move into the city?
So, the reason why I'm, I'm concentrating more on the incentive piece is because I know that the, the requirement piece, I think that there's a lot that goes into that as far as negotiations and things of that nature, so I think if we focus on what we can do, kind of, you know, keep our eye on the care right now, more so than stick, if you will, but if we talk about the care right now, if we can, were to earmark a certain amount of properties, and, you know, we're pretty aggressive working with some of our community partners, as far as maybe even taking on some of the, the risk here, I think that there's ways that we could incentivize homeownership, get people to not just work in our city and almost, you know, for lack of a better term, there's almost an extraction of funds and resources happening when people are working in the city but supporting other tax bases. So if we can incentivize them to stay here and pay taxes here and shop here, get their gas here and their groceries here and so on and so forth, then, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of good that can happen with that. Mr. Wood?
So, yeah, I, I agree with that, and I've been speaking with the school board president about only around teachers and not about the, the other folks here, so that's something that I know that the school district also has an interest in making, trying to get our teachers to live here as well. And I, I'm supportive of incentives, but I feel like every, every, if we're offering incentives, they have to have a sunset. And so we, you know, incentivize people to come here, whether it's, whatever term we want to use for it, similar to what we call pilots, but they need to have a sunset, and also it can't be just flat, it needs to, you know, every year, I believe, increase because we can't. It needs to, you know, every year, I believe, increase because we can't incentivize people to live here at the expense of taxpayers. So, we want to make sure that if, you know, if we're offering this, that it makes sense for the people that are coming, but also the people that are currently here as well.
Yeah, no, definitely. I think so, the formula that we have to look at is, you know, really, because there's a lot of available research, actually, there's a lot of research right on the HUD website that will kind of support this, where you might initially, you know, you're looking at it as an investment and incentive, but for the long-term, you know, the long-term gain, economic boost that you can gain as far as, and I didn't even, because I didn't even look at the research as far as neighborhood stability goes, just more so the economic impact, is, you know, I think it was almost four times. So, you get almost four times your investment back and so on. And I think that is similar to like other programs that have happened in the city before, where we had like people who had to live here for a certain amount of time in order to have whatever, you know, benefit that they're talking about. But I think here, what we do is if we, you know, piloted maybe with, obviously working with the development department, piloted maybe with a couple of city-owned properties first, and then expand the conversation to maybe with some of our development partners. But I think that we have to be a lot more aggressive than what we're being right now to get people not just to come work in the city or come hang out in the city, but really live here in the city. So, that's really the goal here. Any other questions? Ms. Turner?
Thank you. I'd like to ask, maybe corporation council, as far as their unions go, I mean, before we even put this discussion out there, start working with development, or where we're gonna get the money to incentivize, I mean, we're not privy to any contracts, union contracts that happen with first responders, and especially not teachers. So, what is it that, I'd like to know what the teachers' union is looking for as an incentive, or maybe even the first responders, what they'd be interested in to live here. And then again, agreeing with Ms. Porterfield that an incentive would have to be given to every city employee who lives and works here. We wouldn't want to just, you know, say everyone new would have an incentive, but we'd want to offer something to everyone who lives in our beautiful city and works here. I mean, so, I'd like to know, you know, if this is even reasonable.
Oh, it's reasonable.
Well, I'm just saying that before we put a lot of time and effort into it, what the teachers' union thinks and the union for the first responders, the police and firefighters.
So, just, I can answer just a little bit of that. Number one, this is not, the reason why, again, I don't know if you recall what I was saying earlier, I was saying that we focus on the incentive piece, because the, you know, the requirement piece, I think, involves more heavily like with unions and negotiations with the mayor. So, I have spoken to leadership in the school district, and they, this is something that they're definitely interested in pursuing as well. And as the pieces come together, what we have is the benefit of other municipalities that's happening, that this type of thing is happening everywhere, so we kind of are, we have a bit of a smoother learning curve, if you will. So, that's why I would invite you to kind of just look at those other things that are happening in other municipalities and look at, you know, and see. So, if you look at the data there, then it might help justify that. As far as input from the unions, I think is a really great place to start, but I also think that, you know, it's one of those things that we don't want to necessarily fight for our limitations, and it isn't something that, the goal is to get people who do not live in the city to come and live in the city. So, I think that, you know, anything that we were to put together needs to keep that goal in mind, where we don't want maybe someone that's living on this street to kind of move over to this street. We want to make sure that we're bringing people into the city to help support the tax base. And then Ms. Patrick, I'm about to, unless you have a different...
Just to follow, so where are these other municipalities that, what incentives are out there? If you could just share with us so we can maybe look into that.
Certainly. So, what I have, looking at a couple of different, so you got the, so the Detroit Land Bank does something like that, Buffalo Urban Homestead does something like that, Baltimore, there's a program called Live Near You Work, and the HUD program that I was referencing is called Good Neighbor Next Door, and that's the national program.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Patrick?
Well, I definitely think we have to hear about contract negotiations with all of our unions, but especially with the, you know, the police and firefighters. So, I like the, you know, I know you said requirements or incentives. I don't really know that we could go with the requirement term. Incentive, I know many years ago, when I was living in Troy, New York, they actually had a similar program to try to get more artists to move into Troy. So, they were doing incentives in terms of some of the housing in Troy to build up that artistic community within the city of Troy. I don't know if you remember that. But I think in terms of, I mean, I'm just, again, I don't do the contract negotiations with our first responders, but I think it would definitely have to be something that would go to the mayor and get his thoughts, and also, not just the unions, but also our school board and superintendent in terms of me. I know that you probably have spoken to the superintendent, but I think it's a school board, you know, it's similar for me in terms of, you know, we don't want to be encroaching on other people's roles and responsibilities in terms of, you know, who makes the decisions in these other entities. I'm looking at one of our school board members as I speak in terms of this, but certainly, you know, down the road and pursuing or, you know, at least exploring incentive kinds of things. But I'd like to hear from the mayor as well.
So, in terms of, you know, I hear the union being introduced to the conversation, but what I'm clearly hearing from Mr. Farley is these are incentives, which means that people get to choose. It doesn't impact the union negotiations or any of that. You get to choose. If we got to come up with something, then you could decide whether it was something that was appealing to you enough to live in the city. So, I don't hear that we're trying to get this moved into any part of their requirement or any part of their union negotiation. That's not what I'm hearing, and it's also, I don't think a place that we should be at this point anyway. So, I'm hearing incentives, so I don't want us to develop roadblocks that don't need to be there if we're just saying to people, would you like to live here? Because we can offer this. Now, we definitely have to figure out what that incentive could possibly be, and if it's monetary, which is like, eh, we really have to look at that. But I just want to just say here that we're not talking about anything that is going to require the union to come and say, you must say to your members that you have to move into the city, or if not, then this. We're not asking, that's not what, excuse me, I shouldn't say that, that's not my understanding of this process.
No, absolutely not. So, and I referenced this a couple of times in the conversation, to be clear, that's why I want to focus on the incentive parts in recognizing that there are some requirements that we have, that we now have in the book. And reality of this is, look, if we're thinking that our community is stronger by having maybe thirty to forty more upper and middle-class, well-paying, sustainable positions in our city, if we know that to be true, unless someone's already in that, then I, you know, I would just welcome you to, let's use our best level of innovation. This is something I have shared this idea with the mayor and our former superintendent at one point as well. There's been conversations with the school board, there's been a conversation with the union, and there's been conversations with the current superintendent. This is just saying, let's use what we have to make the city more attractive for professionals to come here and support our tax base instead of supporting other tax bases. And I think if there's ever been a time where we really need to start to think about how to do that, we know what we're facing in our coming budget discussions. I was hoping that that would provide some level of urgency for us to say, okay, we really need to be, how can we be more competitive and make sure that we get people coming here to support our city? And not to mention all the other economic benefits of people living their lives here and spending their money here or the neighborhood stability piece. So, again, if we can do it, I think it's kind of a no-brainer unless it's something that, unless, again, there's other motivations as to why we wouldn't want to do that. And I certainly know that that wouldn't be the case. Ms. Patrick?
Yeah, no, I was reacting to, I guess I was responding to the way that the legislative request read, it did talk about requirements. So, I was just pointing out that, you know, I don't really think we can require, but the incentive piece I'd be open to exploring.
Nope, 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 nope. The requirement piece is acknowledging in the list is that there are requirements, and that's why I think that as a city council, what we can do is use our, put our minds together, be thought partners in the process and say, okay, based on properties that maybe we own, upcoming development, we know we have a lot of partners within our finance community, maybe some of our credit unions, maybe we get to the table and say, these are, this is the type of property, this property fits the profile of our parameters of investment that we can make, or expectations somebody else to make, and then we could support that, put that as a package deal, and attract some people who want to come here, lay down roots and support our tax base. But with that being said, I started this, I recognize that we have a very lengthy agenda today. It's really something to invite you guys in to be thought partners on, and let's maybe come up with an incentive package. And I will be reaching out to the mayor's office and the relevant office to see if there's any thoughts around that as well. Ms. Porterfield?
Yes, Mr. Farley, you mentioned a couple of places that you looked at, where's examples that you looked at. Can you minimally at least send us the link so we're all looking at the same thing, or provide it to the clerk's office and give it forward to all of us so that we all are at least considering the same information that you considered?
Yes, I will do that. Yes, and, not either, yes, and, I will do that, but I also am looking for the collective kind of innovation of the council. So, if there's other places, there's, I'm sure there's programs that I have that I'm unaware of, and I haven't done in my limited scope of resources, or maybe just some new fresh ideas that you guys have moved yourselves. So, I really want to, I welcome that as well, and will do so. Thank you, President. Certainly will do that. Any other questions or comments around that?
Just, the current code is quite specific. It says that I can hire anybody. They have to move within the city within six months. There's a residency review board. If somebody doesn't do that, it's a hardship case to appeal that. That board consists of myself or my appointee, the corporation council appointee, and three members appointed by the city council president. So, sixty percent are appointed by the council president. The board can't function. The last time the council looked to change that residency was to allow people to live outside of the city. I vetoed that, that was sustained, and to, also, Mr. Fry, I think, confluence in looking at incentive, have to be careful when you talk about the distressed property that we're taking, and still dealing with that Supreme Court decision where we have to sell the property at pretty much maximum value. If we can't show that our expenses or costs equal or exceed the sale price, we have to refund that difference. And so, if you create an incentive in a housing purchase, you might be considering, or creating liability for the city where we would have to make up that difference from a fair market appraisal on the property. And generally, the properties that we're taking now are in better condition because over the last years, we cleaned up the worst of the worst. And so, again, hopefully with this round coming in, we'll be moving those through the process and, again, into some way that we can attract first responders, city employees, or other municipal people, whether they're teachers, to come here. We want to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Williams?
But I would say as opposed to hoping, we can put in place like structured plans to address that very issue. So, I think in that scenario about properties, what also identified was property tax rebates. So, I think what I often hear around the table is, I'm not saying specifically your responses, Mr. Mayor, but on a continuous basis, it's a lack of objectivity, and I just hear a thousand and one reasons why we can't do things. And I heard earlier today that there are more solutions than unsolvable situations. And I think if we enter conversations with that mindset sincerely, I sincerely think the city propels further than we're already in.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And I would also just like to highlight the fact that as we move, as the point of this being presented in this way is exactly for us to have those conversations and kind of workshop through what are the potential barriers. But, and I think I'm echoing a little bit about what Mr. Williams was saying, but if we're entering the conversation in good faith, or we're not trying to fight for our limitations, but as we make this decision, the same way we make any other decision right now, is that we make that well within the parameters of the law and don't create any liability for the city, which I'm pretty sure that we would all say we don't do that now when we sell a city-owned property. So, I don't think that this, you know, I think that if we approach this with that same lens and that same understanding, I have a lot of faith in corporation council to help us, to help guide us through this, to make sure that anything that we would do would be within the allowed parameters. And I would just say that I would look to some other municipalities that are doing similar things to do this. And again, we have a lot of people that are gainfully employed within our city, within our school district, who are really good people but are supporting other area tax bases. And I think if we prioritize our city and all the great benefits that we could have of creating something like this, then I think, again, it's just a no-brainer.
So, I just think that as ever moving forward in this process, you start, one place to start it, one thing, one data source that we need is the percentage of people that we currently have who employ in, as if first responders and teachers is what you're employing as well. If we have that percentage, we kind of know what we're looking at.
Yeah, and I mean, these are kind of old numbers that are exciting, but I believe there's something like ninety percent of the teachers, this would be certified teachers, teachers that didn't live in the city. That's, I believe that it was that at one point, I'm not really sure if that's the case now, but we could definitely revisit that. But even, again, I think that if we look at, there's a large enough pool for teachers, first responders, people looking to purchase homes, that if we can come up with something that is attractive package for them, then we'll be able to do that one way or the other. So...
So, we're consistently saying teachers, but this is, it includes other support staff as well, because not everyone in the district is a teacher.
Yes, exactly. So, yes, it would, right? And the reason why I use teachers to start with is because when I'm looking from the research that I've done, it was for teachers, right, for certified teachers, because there's also an academic benefit to having a certain, you know, this research that shows it's an academic benefit, having teachers that live in your community, which I won't bore you with everything, but definitely talks about that institutional knowledge of what's happening in the communities, and also lends itself to like culturally responsive education practices. So, that's why I used the term T she began with, but I think that there's a great value in including that to other people who work inside of our school district who are looking to purchase homes in our great city. Ms. Patrick?
Well, I think that, you know, I guess if we were down the road to consider such a thing, first of all, I'm gonna joke that my dad, if I was ever talking about something like this with my dad, my dad would have said, do you want to go out in the backyard and pick the money off the money tree that I've grown in the backyard? To try to, you know, make me understand as a person growing up that we didn't have an unlimited source of funding. But I guess if we were to, I like the creativity in terms of, you know, thinking about how do we get more people to come and live in our city? I think all of us around the table want more people to come and live in our city. I mean, at that point, when we, you know, if we were moving forward with a larger discussion down the line, and we'd be involving the school district, and we'd be involving the community, et cetera, into these sort of larger discussions, you know, I'll throw out there that why limit it to, you know, why couldn't it be an incentive program for anyone that wanted to come into our city? It doesn't have to be teachers or first responders, it could be anybody buying a house, you know, if you had the right partners, whether they were banking, I mean, that is what the homes program, the genesis of the homes program, as I recall, I mean, again, I wasn't on city council at that time, but I think it was, you know, it's a great partnership with financial partners and, you know, other folks in terms of, in terms of that program as well, I think, if I'm correct, that there were a lot of partners involved in that as well. So, you know, something to think of, doesn't have to be limited to certain groups of people.
Certainly. So, two things I would say, and to use your analogy, I think if the problem was presented with this, he might say that... the problem was presented with this, he might say that, that right now, what we're doing in our current situation, we're taking our water, we're going to water the neighbors. And this, you and the colony, their money tree, we're pouring our water in their money tree. That's why the money that's coming from our city is going to support their tax base. So again, this isn't something, um, that I'm looking at as necessarily an expense to the city, but it's clearly, and if done right, it's an investment and we get a great return on our dollar, which is why you see similar things happening in other municipalities across the country. They're doing that for that reason. The research will definitely show you. And it's the same line of research as to why we uplifted our youth employment program, because that dollar stays within our, our circles within our community, six times, where other investment owners, um, I think the average is, is closer, three times. So if we look at the data, it supports it. And it's not something that where we are taking things from our money tree, but we're actually planting seeds for our money tree so later on, those dollars can stay within our community. Um, I would also, and this is something that I'm not exactly sure on, I think being as close as, as we can is important. But I think that there is some research around sustainability of certain, uh, upper middle-class jobs, that you do want to target a certain, um, certain profession, such as a teacher, a first responder. Again, not only because of their, the sustainability, longevity of their position, but also when you have first responders that live in the community, then they're responding to a community that they live in and they know people. So you get to leverage that, uh, community engagement level there, which gives you better outcomes as well as teachers. So that, that's some of the reasons why I believe that other municipalities are focusing on those two kind of subgroups. And my, I think it's a good place to start. But believe me, if we can come up with some data to, to make it a little more wide and inclusive, I would absolutely do so. Any other thoughts, questions, or comments on that? Okay, so please, I'll send out what I have to the city clerk, and then you guys do the same, and let's work together to come up with something really awesome, and get some people to buy homes in our city. So, next agenda item is to amend the city code to remove citizenship or immigration status documentation requirements for all certificates permits and licenses. So as we were talking about, um, our, the type of certificates that we were going to need for massage parlors, um, in that conversation, um, it was brought to my attention that the code, as it stur, as it currently stands, says that people have to provide these documentations. Um, corporation council explained to me that though the code is written that way, and the application of, of the code, we're not necessarily requiring people to do that, but it's an option for them to do that in order to meet the standard of to sustain a certificate, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, and I was thinking, that's a great practice, number one, so shout out to corporation council for that. Um, and, but I was also thinking that, being that that isn't a practice, I think that our beliefs, policies, and practices should all align. And, and what we're seeing going on across the nation right now, I think it's a great time to make sure that we're not putting families, um, at risk, and increasing, um, or decreasing protective factors around people that live in our city. Any other questions, comments on that? Mr. Williams? Thanks. Any other questions, comments on that?
I think, um, I think that it's just in our code around, um, professional licenses, et cetera, correct?
From the code that, so, it, it is, but it's a requirement, it's written as, it has a requirement right now.
Thank you. That's that new, is that the new thing that you got today?
Mm-hmm.
Right here?
And it's.
Number five.
It's written in our code as a required, as this thing is right now.
I guess.
Sorry.
Sure. When I think about, especially the conversations that we have started around massage parlors, I think we have to be really careful. There is an element of human trafficking, um, going on in our very own community. I don't think people really think about that. And we really want to make sure to be protecting, you know, folks that are being brought here illegally. Um, so I think in terms of, you know, business ownership, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I think this was in our mailbox when we were coming in today, so I didn't, I didn't have a chance to look at this yet. I'm sorry. Um, but I really would want to make sure that, um, business owners were still showing documentation of citizenship, that we were making sure that, you know, people that are coming in for some of those businesses from our, some of our bodegas, um, that we're just protecting the employees, and that we're making sure that those employees are indeed citizens, um, and have appropriate documentation, um, so that we're not, you know, folks that are being trafficked, that we're not taking advantage, not to, not that we would be taking advantage, that there are people out there that might be taking advantage of, you know, folks in a really damaging way, especially women. Um, and I just would want to make sure that that's not, you know, that that doesn't prevail. So that's my, you know, I, I think that, but I want to, I'm going to have to read this, which I did not have a chance to read when we were sat down. But those are some of my initial thoughts, um, about that. And I really want to make sure that we're protecting people. And not, you know, there are, unfortunately, people out there that are taking advantage of people. Um, and definitely, we know that the human trafficking piece is an issue even here. Um, it's hard for us to, you know, think about that, right? I mean, but it does happen here. Um, and we want to make sure that we can do whatever we can to prevent that.
Yeah, so, I would just be, so human trafficking is, is a, is a real thing that impacts all communities. Um, I'm, I'm thinking, what I'm proposing is that this is something that goes across, um, citywide. Uh, when you're saying things like massage parlors and bodegas, and particularly, I think that that's, we just have to be mindful of, like, what message that we're sending, even if it's, and I genuinely want to say that, I'm sure that there's no intention behind that, but I'm just saying we have to be mindful about how, you know, if I, if I were identifying certain businesses, um, like bodegas and things like that. I think that that kind of speaks to what I'm really trying to make sure that every person that owns a business, or operating in a lawful business within our city, um, is doing so and allowed to do so with some level, level of dignity, um, and, and, and all the protections that we could possibly offer. Um, I'm, I'm going to stop there, not, not if I was to mention you.
So I just want to point of clarity, because I thought, Ms. Patrick, what you said was that we want to make sure that employees are citizens. Did, did I understand that correctly?
Well, if, if there's owners of businesses that, everybody, no, I'd want to make sure that everybody, you know, business owners as well. Um, we just want to, I guess my point, and Mr. Farley definitely recognized this, is, you know, I think, hopefully, everyone here at this table is upset about the things that we see going on nationally, um, from some of our national leaders. Um, and I think we really want to make sure, I mean, we know that in certain, certain businesses, you know, even some products are being sold illegally. I mean, I think we have to make sure that we're protecting our residents, um, that we're making sure that, you know, we know that there's these crimes going on in our city as well, around human trafficking. And I'm just saying, I think folks having to show that they're citizens in one sense might be protecting some of the folks that are, you know what I'm saying?
I think I know what you're trying to say.
That are victims of people who are participating in nefarious activity, um, is what I'm trying to say.
I think I know what you're trying to say. I think that, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
So although I understand the spirit, Ms. Patrick, I want you presenting that, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, corporation council, the, the reasoning for having this be a considered document is to confirm someone's identity, nothing more, nothing less, correct?
At the moment, yes.
So I'd say the aspects that you're trying to, to address aren't even components of enforcement within the city as it currently stands, to my information. So I'd be cautious at putting that notion or attaching into this, where hearing or referencing that conversation we had a few weeks ago, sincerely was, if this is just a suggestion, suggested document request from individuals that is not even truly considered, let's just remove it, and have us be more intentional about the documents that we are requesting.
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Williams. So in terms of how would be applicable to a business like a massage parlor, um, massage sewers or massage therapists are licensed by the state, and the state requires proof that the person is lawfully here. Um, and so in that case, since that type of business requires a professional license, we would probably need to see those licenses, um, and the immigration statuses would be shown to the state anyway.
Right, so.
So, can I ask?
Yeah, sure.
So just, just to clarify, you're saying that since they have to be licensed by the state anyway, and the state requires those documents?
Right.
We do not have to duplicate that effort by asking for them, because in order to get their license, they have to produce that anyway?
In order to get a license, yes, they would have to produce that for the state.
Okay.
And I understand when I asked those questions around this last time, again, that the practices or practice right now is that people are not required to show this documentation, but it's, it's an option for them to show this documentation as a proof, a proof of identity.
Right, Mr. Farley. If you read section five, it says copies of documentation identifying all owners and operators of business, including passport, driver's license, immigration, or citizenship records, and it goes on. We don't ask for a passport and a driver's license. If they provide one of them, that's sufficient. But if someone here is legally in the United States, but they don't have a driver's license or a non-driver ID, we might say, let us, uh, you know, submit your, submit your visa. That is an option for them to be able to prove their identity and that they're, um, you know, legally starting a business.
So, yeah, so, I think you helped, the point I'm trying to raise is that they can, they can as far as an option. But right now, how it's written, um, it, it, it doesn't say like, it doesn't have it written as an option. It's written as, um, a requirement, I understand. Madam President?
Good morning.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Oh, yes, thank you. Maybe you could just rewrite it, ask me to present one of the following.
In this room.
Madam President?
If we're talking about amending the code, then, um, and we're talking about all documents aren't needed, it's, then I think the word or, you know, it's sort of like similar when we go to the DMV, they have a list, you can have this, 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 or this, this, this. So, um, if we use the word or, because I have to agree with Mr. Farley, the way it's written here, it doesn't look like or, it looks like all inclusive. That's the way it's written currently in the code. I know it's written a long time ago, and none of us had a part in that. Uh, so I think it's really important that we're, we're considering that, you know, those aren't one of the documents we want to include. And even though we didn't get to talk about it tonight, and it was on the agenda, we've already had a situation where we had, um, a staff member make a phone call and refer to someone's immigration status or legal status of being here. So I think this just increases that, you know, this kind of highlights this conversation, and that we should, you know, be taking a look at that.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, Ms. Raj, I guess the question is, we, the immigration statuses, you know, the state would request it along a spa, massage parlor. Is there any other business, um, that wouldn't go through the state that we would need that for, that would want a certificate of use?
Um, the only professional business covered by this section, well, it's not in there yet.
Bars.
Yeah, they have a, they, they get licenses from the county and.
License from the state.
Okay, go ahead. Um, so the in terms of professional license, the massage parlors, if that's added, would be the only professional license. But yes, bars, cannabis, um, elements of convenience stores are licensed by the county and the state in certain respects. Um, I couldn't tell you for certain whether immigration or citizenship is required, because there's a lot of different laws that would be applicable. Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, the way it's written right now is, it, there's the, there's the option to request it. If there's a concern about human trafficking, the city can, can request it. If there's not, the city doesn't request it, only if it's provided or needed for identification. So it provides some flexibility, both for the applicants for certificates of use, as well as the city in enforcement of, um, of laws relating to, um, potentially human trafficking.
Yeah. So, again, I think we're kind of talking about two different issues, and we need, it's really important that we make the, the appropriate distinctions here, so we're not unintentionally, um, giving the wrong message. Um, this is about someone to open a business prior to their use, correct?
Well, they would have to renew it every year. So every year, they have to recertify.
Sure. So if there's a business that is in operation, and then there's a suspect, uh, we suspect some human trafficking, which, again, I want to be really mindful of, like, how we're getting to that place, and what, with someone's immigration status, how that relates to a suspicion of human trafficking. I think that that's, that, that's something that we just have to be mindful as we, uh, kind of unpack this together. Um, there are remedies for these type of concerns. And I don't think, as a city, that corporation council would be saying, we're concerned about human trafficking, so now we're going to, when you come to renew, we're going to request this documentation that we didn't request to begin with. So if it's a renewal process, then how would we be leveraging that anyway? I just that.
I'm sorry. Sometimes the ownership will shift within an organization.
Certainly, certainly.
Might still, might still be the same business, but partners have changed, or people have been added, or dropped out of the organizational structure.
Right. And, and if some, and again, I would assume that if, if organi, if, if ownership changed over a business, we're not going to request a certain documentation from one owner that we didn't request from a previous owner, based on what we believe to be their immigration status, correct?
Mr. Farley, we wouldn't base simply, um, I mean, we wouldn't randomly ask someone for their immigration status.
So what, under what circumstances would we be asking them under their immigration status?
If the applicant needs to submit documentation, and like I said earlier, they don't have a passport or driver's license, they have the option of, of providing a visa, or some other form of showing legal citizenship.
Absolutely.
If, um, in terms of renewal, certain documents and information is requested, or is, is required to be, um, submitted each year from a business. And as the mayor said, it, it, sometimes the owners or information changes, so they submit that. Um, laws change if, uh, so from year to year, things might be a little different. Policies change. But in the meantime, we're, I'm not, nor is anyone in my office randomly asking anyone for their immigration or citizenship status. And I want to be clear about that.
Yeah, so just so, as I started off this, I said that, in the conversation, you said that application, and the pro, and the practice of this, um, the practice is that it's, someone can present it as an option for identifying themselves, right? They can present it, but you're not requiring that. They can present it, but you're not requiring that. Right, so all I'm saying is that we should change our policy to reflect our practices. If that indeed is the practice, then there should be no reason why we wouldn't want to adapt the policy to support that practice because as it stands right now, someone could, even though they're not, someone could. And they would be within the parameters of what our written policy is.
It's up to the council.
Right, that's why I'm bringing it.
Right, I'm saying that it's.
Ms. Porterfield?
My question in terms of certificate of use, are there some things specifically that the people have to provide? So their tax registration, their identification, are those specifics? And then are there others that in order to identify who they are, they could, like, I could produce my driver's license versus my passport? So are there some things that every single business must have? And then are there other things that identify them as an individual that they could choose from a list of things?
So there are requirements for particular types of insurances, liability, workers' comp, fire insurance. We generally need a deed or a lease to show that business is in a location legally, confirmation of bank accounts, and then particular licenses, like a state liquor authority license or cannabis license. And then the section for photo ID on the, we have a checklist of what people have to submit. It says photo ID for all owners, operators, and managers. Driver's license, comma, passport, comma, immigration or citizenship records. So our application shows the interpretation that our office has taken.
Ms. Williams?
I'd say, and also just referencing the ending of Paragraph A, it says the application must in every instance include the following.
Yes, it does.
So I think even in our current interpretations, the differentiation, how we view this, is subject to put in stronger language because just in our minds, it's not farfetched to think that this does not exist in many other residents in the city. So I have to agree, just putting it in language that more finely outlines some softer language level you're requesting, I think is beyond appropriate.
Again, I just, I'm a little, I would say, well, the language itself just says exactly what it says. And it seems like due to the leadership of Corporation Council, which I really do appreciate in this instance, that we're having a certain practice in the way we're engaging people, I think that that's a really good thing. And I think that there is value in making sure that our beliefs, our policies, and our practices are aligned. And if I can't, and I can't think of a reason why we would want to request said documentation for someone, but leaving it as an option, if that's the documentation they had to meet the requirement of appropriate identification, I think is pretty reasonable. And I guess we'll open it up to the council for anybody that has any reasons why they think that wouldn't be reasonable.
I don't think it wouldn't be reasonable. And again, I think we just have to have the language that, well, there's some documents that we absolutely must have, we didn't need the application. And here you read it, I did note that there were commas and not or. The only or was between immigration status and citizenship records. So if a passport or driver's license is ready is acceptable, then I think then or should be there as opposed to passport, comma, driver's license, comma, because that to me is inclusive.
Okay, so you'd like the application to read driver's license or passport or immigration or citizenship records?
If that, if those are acceptable documents, which is what I'm understanding you're saying. That is my suggestion.
Ms. Patrick?
I'm just not really seeing why we're having this discussion. I mean, do we have to change this? Why would we have to change this? I mean, it sounds like we're all in agreement that this is appropriate except for the comma.
No, that's not. So literally, the last sentence in the code is saying, the way the code is written right now, is written that people have to provide this in every circumstance. That's how the code is written. That's what it says. That's why I'm saying if our practice isn't that, and I'm glad it isn't that, then our code should reflect our practice. That's why we're having the conversation. Do you, if you read this, do you not agree that it says that it's a must?
It does look like this is what we are requiring owners and operators of a business.
Which is why we're having the conversation. So I wouldn't, the last thing I want to do is waste our time as a council, so, which is why. And I believe, I'm proposing that our code should reflect our practice and our values as a city. And I want to.
Sure. Mr. Turner?
May I just ask Corporation Council, read the back of what you required again, because on the back, it is required that there's an immigration status, correct? So they put an application in on your checklist. Come here. I agree that it should be one of the following. Okay. And I said that they have commas, one of the following. But when she just read. What, someone's getting business licenses and certificates. Where did I see that checklist? Okay, documents required, and this, the back of this, this is your checklist specifically in Corporation Council?
This is the checklist that our office uses.
For insurance, yes. Photo ID for all owners, operators, and managers. Driver's license, comma, passport, comma, immigration or citizenship records. So it would kind of probably have to be changed on this as well. I don't have an issue with any of that. But we just want to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, this is going to chime in here as far as adding or to the language. And then if it's going to be amendments to the code, then there has to be a public hearing. The public hearing would be on the 27th of this month. And then, you know, the next council committee cycle, there could be a draft presented to the committee. So we can, it sounds like you want to add or to that regarding driver's license or immigration or citizenship records or tax registration. And then somehow rephrase that rest of that sentence regarding tax registration, identification, certificates for the business and any owner operator. That's like tax ID numbers, I think that's what we're looking at there. But we can draft something based on the conversations here tonight regarding amending Paragraph V of that. And then if you want to go forward with just a public hearing, you could do that. Just for real quick legislative history on this, the, if you have, everybody has the 183-6 in front of them. Really for the, without putting corporate in, the original legislation did not have back, that was done back in 1998 for business certificates of use. Yes, I was in the council then, so. Did not have the, it didn't have that, if you see that sentence, last sentence, for purposes of the application. And that was, that language and everything below regarding all those specifics was added in the 2007 amendment. And that was added. The original one was, it was the Bureau of Neighborhood Revitalization rather than the Corporation Council's office. And what was deleted was that it would be in a form designated by the department. Didn't get it, the 2007 amendment put all that, that verbiage in from, for the purposes of all the way, all the way through what the application's supposed to have. And then over the years, in 2015, it was amended to add some other businesses. And then in 2022, vape shops and cannabis shops were added to the list of businesses. And now you're going to be left adding massage parlors to that. But the original language did not have all this detail in going back to 1998. So with that, and if you want to do a resolution calling for a public hearing to amend that Section 183-6, and we looked in the city code and we couldn't find any other, anything else in the code regarding immigration status. It seems that it was just this section of the code. So we did a search regarding immigration. And so it's just this part of the code that has it, so.
Think of that, and again, it's part of being responsive to the people of the city and that things are going to change, and they should. So we talked about the or as well as, you know, that last sentence, which reads for clarity for everyone, the application must in every instance include the following, which goes on to say copies of immigration or citizens' records. So right now, how it's written, the application must in every instance include the following. So that's why that needs to change. And we look back at number 11, it says authorizations permitting the city to conduct background credit, then actually immigration and criminal history checks for any owner and operator. That's number 11. So again, these might not be with it, these might not be our practices. However, this is our policy and the two should align and for good reason here.
So is the council looking to have 11 deleted?
So I, so Mr. O'Brien was saying that based on the conversation today, you guys could provide us with some, maybe a draft that we could. That's what Brian was saying?
Well, that was dealing with five regarding or, you know, adding ors to that particular paragraph. And then regarding 11, what does the council want to do regarding 11?
Well, so first, so five adding ors and then adding ors to number five, I think then we would have to say the application, okay, so then the application must in every instance include the following, or we kind of addressed that. Number 11, authorizations permitting the city to conduct a background immigration and criminal history, criminal history checks for any owner and operator. I don't know that that's something that we want to leave in, that we will be conducting immigration checks on people? Any thoughts on that? I'd like to see that.
It's inconsistent with what the policies are for e-justice. You can't use that criminal history for civil matters. So that cannot be done.
Right. Mr. Turner? You were saying something as far as immigration checks?
Well, I was okay with that, except the criminal history checks. So we can't do that anymore, so that needs to be.
Well, we're not doing that.
We're not doing it.
If somebody's doing it, they're in trouble.
We won't want anyone to be in trouble for doing something that is within the parameters of.
But the city council told them to do.
Right, which is why the city council is very clearly saying not to do that so we don't have those situations. So Mr. Turner, you're saying that you're okay with us.
Leaving immigration, yeah.
Authorizing the city to conduct immigration checks?
Well, the President, not in Bradstreet, I mean, are those things that we currently do, Ms. Barash?
No.
So do we even need that line?
I'm just, right, I'm focusing on the immigration at this point, and I'm wondering, so are you saying that you want to leave immigration checks in there in number 11?
I'm saying if we don't, currently, it's not currently active that we do it, why not just get rid of the whole line? Can you just look over the back of that and present?
Us with. It's up to the council whether, so would you like us to delete Section 11 in the draft?
I'm suggesting that we delete immigration and criminal history checks if what the mayor is saying we can't do. We should probably eliminate anything that is illegal for us to do. And I would highly suggest that we eliminate immigration unless anybody feels that we should be running immigration checks as a quarter.
Thank you. So in terms of certificate of use, is this something?
You're really, someone really honestly, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Porterfield.
So in terms of this, in certificate of use and what's new, is this is what our code enforcement asks people for? Let's just talk to the process of how people apply for certificate of use.
So code enforcement doesn't get involved until after law reviews. So an applicant would fill out the application, I read you part of it earlier, submit documentation that's required. If documentation is missing, we request that it be resubmitted after legal has reviewed and made sure that all of the ministerial requirements are met. We send an approval letter to the applicant and a copy goes to the mayor's office and I believe to codes. The mayor's office as well as the fire department, police department, codes meets at the business with the owners to say hello and to fill the report. And codes does a, an inspection to make sure everything at the business is safe for the public and for the employees. And then following that process, the mayor would do the final sign off. If there was requirements for going through the planning commission or variances, we would also have looked for that during our legal review.
So just for the clarification, so number 11, you're saying it's not something that is currently done?
No.
And Mayor, are you saying that we're not supposed to do that? It's against the law? Is that what you?
Can't run criminal history for civil matters. This is, has been done strictly for law enforcement purposes.
So I would suggest that we change the language to number five and get rid of number 11 altogether. Well, Madam President?
So the background, the credit check, we don't do? It's just a question? You do not do the credit check either?
No, and I just want to clarify, the applications come in through codes, codes send it to legal, and then we start our process of taking a look at it.
But that is how they come in?
They come in, yeah, I apologize, I forgot for a minute. They come in through codes, they come to us, then codes gets involved again after the legal review.
Mr. Turner?
I think it's something maybe we take a little bit more time on because I don't know what that communication required by 161-21F is. If there's anything in there that we need to be aware of as we're going through this, maybe we should do a little bit more research. Yeah.
Madam President?
I, well, I think that if we're talking about changing and calling for a public hearing, we can do that. And then also while we're waiting for that, take that time to look at the documentation that's required by 161-21F. And if we feel like there's language in there that we need to change, but not necessarily wait to look at it and call for a public hearing. Because, you know, there's an opportunity to do both at the same time, so we're not losing all the time.
Thank you, Madam President.
So 161-21F is a disposal, disposal of waste plan. So each business has to have a plan for garbage collection.
Okay, yeah, it's for garbage collection. And this way, there's, you know, is the city going to be responsible? Where are they going to place their dumpster? That, so it's relevant to that.
I think you might all agree?
Yes. For the, again, for the purpose of this legislative request, I'm asking that we just change the language in number five to reflect or. So people recognize that it is an option, not a requirement. And it seems like all of the actions in number 11, including immigration checks, are things that we don't do. So I'd like that to be removed completely.
So that would be on for a public hearing from the 27th and then a draft go out before the next committee.
Any more questions or comments? I'll entertain the motion to have a public hearing.
What, is that Mr. O'Brien? It's going to be the 28th, I'm sorry, 20, is that the 28th? It's the Monday?
27th, I think.
I think it's 27th.
Yes, 27th is definitely Monday.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 27th. Okay, it's 27th. Yeah, I'm sorry, it's 27th, okay, it's 27th Monday.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Polls in favor? Anything else to come for government operations? Matt, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A second, a favor? We are adjourned.
I'd like to follow, or the Public Safety Committee, we have one item on the agenda tonight that is discussion regarding the installation of stop signs in the trial bases at problematic locations in Chicago.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've been receiving phone calls, emails, attending neighborhood meetings and residents have been identifying certain areas to be unsafe and really impacting their quality of life. One of those areas is in King's Road in particular and I remember reading this before the council and we've had some discussion around this prior. Since then, residents have collected a petition, I can't think of the exact number of signatures that have, that were recorded on the petition, but there seems to be, it seems to be a major quality of life issue for people in this very particular neighborhood. So I wanted to talk with the council about approving maybe a temporary, approving the stop sign to go on a corner of Taylor and King's Road, the original legislation says a different location, but to go on Taylor, King's Road as a temporary, almost opportunity to make sure that we are being responsive to the needs of people in that community because people that live in the community, they're going to see people speeding, accidents, near misses, all of the things, but they're not necessarily correct, collecting every single data point for us to come and say this is what they're experiencing. When we have a petition, if you will, with multiple people, signature on it, living in the neighborhood, then I think it's a quality of life issue that we need to consider. Maybe putting a stop sign in there temporarily, therefore, and we can look at what the impact does to quality of life and increase safety and then we can decide if it's something that we want to leave permanently.
Thank you, Ms. Brash.
I would recommend tabling this and bringing it back where the city engineer can be present.
Yeah, I didn't know he wasn't going to be here today, but I think that that is definitely the best thing to do, to get his input on this. I believe he's come before us previously and let us know that it's something that if we decide to do, we can do. And at this point, I'm just trying to weigh the fact that I know that some version of these conversations have happened multiple times and now we're here and I'm thinking, I don't know that we've had the conversation since the petition was filed. So that's the only kind of thing that I'm trying to kind of negotiate and think about that.
Any other questions or comments?
I would say filling that space, I can understand and challenge my own personal opinions, not that I differ with this, any wish to perform. I agree with Colin, Mr. Wallen was here, he did mention that this was within the purview of council, I made that determination. I agree with having his presence here to ensure it's not going to have any adverse impacts on the rezoning areas. I'd also like to include Becker Street, I think we've heard other areas throughout the city, I think is absolutely us being responsive, but I want to make sure we're being considerate of potential safety with liability, liabilities we are opening ourselves up to, hence having Mr. Wallen present to dispel any of those. But I agree, we have continued to hear and see individuals from this community present here and different meetings and I think this is a really nice way to be responsive, but also consider that this might not be the end all be all, but trying to ensure that we're incorporating the feedback of our residents into our processes at the table. Ms. Patrick?
Yeah, if we're going to open it up, then there's many streets that across the city where our residents have been complaining about the same thing. So, you know, if we want to throw in other, I'll throw in, you know, the corner of Rugby and Wendell where the stop sign was removed, which we've been talking for several years, I think, about trying to get this, you know, back together. But all these, you're right, these discussions have been happening for a long time. But I guess I definitely second that we need Mr. Wallen here and also we have the consultant who comes in with Mr. Wallen to talk about traffic. We have an engineer that we contract with that's a consultant on these traffic safety measures as well. So I can't remember his name though. I can picture him.
Mastriani, Brad Mastriani.
Ms. Mastriani, okay. We probably want him to come back as well because we've talked about this, you know, many times.
All right, so Ms. Porter?
In terms of Rugby and Wendell, I believe our engineer was very, said he was very, they were very intentional about what they did recently in moving those. That was not something that came down and they didn't mean for it, that was an intentional, we think that this works better here.
They, they did say that, we have residents that have definitely said differently. So I'm just saying, I mean, if we're going to have that discussion, we might want to open it up to folks that are listening to, you know, talk about other places where stop signs might be needed. I know the Rugby Road, we've had multiple requests over the years that I've gone to council for various streets on Rugby and yes, that was a more recent, I can't remember how many months ago it was actually, but, you know, we've had recently, I mean, I get that one all the time from residents of that entire area that want to see different changes. So it's not just even that stop sign, it's like all up and down Rugby. So, you know, I guess we'd have to solicit proposals from our residents for other streets, including King's Road, Becker, Rugby, I don't want to, I know Mr. Tor lives on that street, so we, you know, but the Wendell thing, I'm sure there's other streets out there across the city.
Ms. Brash?
Yeah, so I.
Sorry.
I, I would agree that there's multiple locations in, in legislation I talked about, like this, you know, being something that we can consider to do other places. I think the distinction, for me anyway, in this specific location is the amount of data that we've already, already been given to the council as well as, you know, I've, you know, seen pictures and videos and there's also a petition with, and I, for the length of time, I just can't think of how many signatures on that petition. So I, I agree that it should be a broader conversation, but my expectation would be once Mr. Wallen returns that we take a vote that night because this is something that's been lingering for a while and I'm just looking at the level of information that we have had outside of just like someone calling saying, hey, this is an unsafe situation. It's been multiple times, people have said it, multiple voices at the neighborhood association meeting, multiple people talked about the need for this and as well as we were able to see some pictures and some video that supported this. So I think it's just time for us to take some sort of action in regards to that. Ms. Tor?
Thank you, yes. So as far as the petitions go, I think I referred, for the corporation council that it's, the petitions isn't something that you need to put up a stop sign, is that correct? We've been through that before. King's Road has, has, has been looked at and studied and there's still consistent data out there proving and statistics from one of the residents that speeding continues, accidents continue. I know the residents are working very closely with Officer Dalton for traffic safety and Mr. Wallen and in recent speech with Mr. Wallen and the resident and Mr. Dalton, things are kind of coming full circle. So I think we could get a presentation from Officer Dalton and Mr. Wallen at our next meeting, they should definitely be invited and see what they have to say and when some situations in the city, especially on Rugby and Laverly, I don't know if anyone's noticed the, the city contacted the house on the corner, Rugby and Wendell, what happened, put their hedges back. So they're about this big now, but still can't see around it. So there's, there's lots of things that, that need to happen and that's why we put our, our decision making or not our, not our decision making, but we put our confidence in Mr. Wallen and Officer Dalton and go with suggestions of what they may have moving forward as much as I want a solution to everything, especially King's Road.
I'm not saying I'm any response to that, because I was absolutely on that, that consideration of giving preference to Mr. Wallen. I don't want to elicit conversations that weren't at this table with individuals in the city hall, but sincerely what I think is different now is the continued persistence of this neighborhood. I can imagine individuals from that part of the city are not continuing to present at our meetings without Mayor. I think data can be interpreted in different ways and I always give deference to individuals in these positions, but I also think as representatives of the city, I think it's also important to kind of validate where we can, as long as we can do that in an intentional manner. I think rather than soliciting just random streets from across the city, I think formalize that process by way of petitions.
My house has been destroyed eight times, you guys don't give a damn about it.
Yep, so I don't think you want to work or. I'm actually advocating in his interest. It's unfortunate, but that, that emotional charged response, it's due to a continued lack of action from the council. So I think, I appreciate the timeliness of this request, I can understand the caution, but I think what makes this difference is, what makes this different than other areas in the city is the continued study that we've looked at, the petition and the continued presence. So I think if other neighborhoods are willing to go to those lengths without us having any formalized policy in play, I think that provides us the responsibility to respond differently. Mr. Brash?
Yeah, so I think, you know, there's been a lot and now the amount of conversations have been around this, I think that the people that are most impacted have been extremely boisterous to us and have, and so gave us enough information to make an informed decision. I agree that Mr. Wallen's input is necessary. I would just say that if the suggestion for me is to bring this back, if Mr. Wallen is here, that the council agrees that with that input from Mr. Wallen, that's the night that we'll be taking a vote, that night.
Any other questions or comments? I would say hearing that and trying to just make sure we leverage the time we request for individuals from the city to come in. Ms. Patrick, is there any additional input that we need or do you request from Mr. Wallen?
I think that, well, there's all sorts of things that we could be considering. We've been talking about this for a long time, you guys know that it's been my, you know, I kind of see myself as sort of the traffic safety person, I've had meetings with Officer Dalton, I mean, it's just a huge problem. AAA is still offering the discount on the drivers, the defensive driving class because again, it all is always going to come back to, from all the research that I've done, it's always going to come back to how do we change behavior of people that are driving in this city? How do we address all of these concerns? If you, you know, I always use the example of me coming here from my house, generally almost every time I drive, you know, to downtown, I see, you know, three or four people going through red lights. So we need to have, you know, I mean, what we also need to think about, and we're going to be going into our budget discussions, but we have to be also considering, do we have enough officers? Do we have enough patrol officers? We all know that there's a stratified way of looking at the priorities that our officers have to respond to. Traffic is going to probably be the bottom layer of what these guys, these men and women have a chance to do. You know, are they stopping, you know, I tell everyone I know, if you're the first car at a red light and light turns green, do not go. Like definitely make sure that the people coming on the other side are not going through those red lights. In lowering the speed limit to 25, I know, you know, I've been talking to the chief and to Lieutenant Dalton, I was waiting because they wanted more data before they come and make a presentation to the council about the results of that, but I know the last time that I met, which was, I didn't actually date my piece of paper here, but it was, looks like it might have been in July, but at that point, we already are seeing a 14% drop in accidents, which again, you can't say cause and effect on that speed limit, but since the speed limit has been reduced, so there's a lot of things that we can be doing. We haven't talked yet about the, you know, having cameras on the, on the traffic lights. You know, that would also be something that would really reduce people going through red lights and every time they went through a red light, automatically their license plate is getting tagged and they would get, and they would get a ticket. So they, you know, we've been able to increase the number of tickets that have been going out. The other problem would be, you know, the motorbikes, scooters, the mufflers, which I think Ms. Porterfield brought up a while ago, I think, because I actually learned that term from when you brought that up, I forget what you call it, but like the alteration of the mufflers is also a huge issue. So much larger discussion, you know, I feel terrible because, you know, we, when the traffic consultant came with, with Mr. Wallen, they actually didn't have the data to support making huge changes on King's Road. So, I mean, we can continue to do the traffic studies, we've been doing them in other places, we could do it again, I mean, I know it'll cost us money and see if there's been a difference, but those results unfortunately did not show the need. So I am just saying, I'm all in favor of anything we can be doing to reduce, I guess I should say, increase traffic safety.
So I know that it's just discussion, we don't want to go online with the discussion. I just want to make sure that as we have discussions, we start, don't start broadening it from where we originally started so that it becomes, when Mr. Wallen comes here and like, what do you want, we do everything? I can hear him saying it right now. So we just don't want that to be, and we should stay focused on where we started. I will say in terms of if we're talking about a trial period, now we use, or if, we use something similar to what we did with the speed hump slash cable on Dwayne Avenue, and I don't remember the length of time on that, but I think it, I feel like it should be a level of consistency in terms of doing this. So whatever that timeframe was, I know there's a timeframe given in our legislative request, not necessarily that sure if that's the same timeframe that we used. So again, that's something we should bring when Mr. Wallen comes and just want to make sure that he's here the next time. And again, staying focused, we could run this like every place in the city, I could have a stop sign in the middle of my block.
Yes.
But let's, let's not dilute it by adding so many things that we just lose focus on where we started.
Mr. Brash?
Yeah, so just for clarity, I mean, for me, I think that I wouldn't have the support of the council without Mr. Wallen's input is the reason why I'm saying let's, you know, I would agree to wait for Mr. Wallen to come back and be part of the conversation, but I think that he was pretty clear previously that it's, it's an option for us to do that. And again, with the multiple problematic areas in the city, this is one area that I think we have the most qualitative data, if you will, and I don't think that people are going to be taking so much time, you know, out of their lives if this wasn't a real serious issue for them. So I just feel like at this point, I would love to see it go to a vote now, but again, just because I feel like, you know, seems like the feeling of the, of the larger council is to have Mr. Wallen be here and be a part of that conversation, I'll defer to that with the clear, clear expectation that when Mr. Wallen returns, that I'm looking for maybe a.
I just want to add that I recently I got a call from a restaurant in King's Road, it wasn't about the speed so much, it was about the eight ton limit and getting, that there were people who, vehicles that they felt were over eight tons. So there's considerable or continual, I should say, concerns about the traffic on King's Road, be it, be it over the ton limit which we put there or the speeding. So I, I can't disagree that we need to take a focus, look at them and see how, I know that we put in a crosswalk, I always want to say that it's not like the city has done nothing. We put in the crosswalk with the caution, we put in guardrails and so it's not like we haven't taken measures to, to calm the traffic. What we are hearing is those measures have not been enough and so they're asking for more measures is what I'm. more measures, is what I'm understanding is happening right now.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing that, Mr. Farley has the intention of bringing it back in two weeks, with the understanding Mr. Wallen can and will be present. Are there any other items that will fall to public safety? Hearing that, may I have motion to adjourn?
Some move, sorry.
Second, all in favor. We are adjourned. So we're going down to claims. Call over to the Claims Committee, we have four items on the agenda tonight, all of which need to be discussed in executive session. Snap motion to adjourn to executive session. I was seconded, but all in favor. You are in executive session.
In executive session, members of the public will have your...